Show one minute according to my watch. Okay, Tuesday. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, I see it's three o'clock, so I'll call to order the Board of Directors. Mission Springs Water District Board of Director's Study Session. For Thursday, January thirteenth. At 3:00 PM, I want to remind anyone listening that our regular board meeting will be on Tuesday. Due to the holiday and not on Monday, just a reminder. For your calendar. And could I have a roll call, please?
Director Grasha.
Here.
Director Sewell.
Here.
Director Duncan.
Here.
Vice President Ray. President Martin.
Here.
Thank you, we have quorum.
Okay, Council, the rules of procedure.
Yes, according to the rules of procedure adopted by the Board of Directors, all notice meetings are conducted using Rosenberg's Rules of Order as a procedural guideline. The President of the Board presides at all meetings and decides all points of order and procedure during meetings. The President is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all board meetings. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the President. No member of the Board should speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member of the Board wishing to speak on the subject. Shall have been given an opportunity to speak. No Board Member shall interfere with the orderly progress of a Board Meeting. The Board President regulates the amount of time to be dedicated to a particular agenda item.
Thank you, Counselor. Public input, do we have anybody wishing to speak in general, the public comments?
Sir, we do, we have two public speakers today, we'll start with first Pamela Edinson.
Can you hear me?
We can hear Pamela.
Hi, esteemed Board Members and the wonderful staff of Mission Springs Water District. I have something to ask of you today, and that's why I'm being very nice here. But first, I want to tell you what kind of happened over my Christmas vacation. I received the bill from you after we got back from from Christmas going to Sedona, got back on Tuesday. And that night, we're opening our mail, and I find a water bill for a hundred and six dollars. And our bill is usually never more than thirty, thirty-five, forty at the most. So I called in the next day on Wednesday. And was told very briefly and very quickly, sorry, you'll have to call back on Monday. Now, true, it was not gushing water, and it wasn't a national emergency. But it was disheartening to me to find out that we were going to have to let that water keep flowing and flowing until Monday. So the next day, I was still very upset, and I called, actually, I wanted to call anybody I could find. But I called Randy Duncan, because I have known him for a while and had his number handy. I was also tempted to call Nancy and Russ, because I've met with you over the years. And in talking with Randy, you know, we were discussing it kind of back and forth. And I was able to say, well, what if we go out and check the meter? And read it, and then wait and check it again. And we did that, and in accordance, you know, the first fifteen minutes, the water was still going. And we were not using the water anywhere inside. So Charlie, then, my husband, turned the water to the irrigation system off outside. And the water, and waited fifteen minutes, and the water, the meter did not change at all, there was no usage of water. So then we knew it was an irrigation problem. We then called in on Monday and spoke with Ann, who was wonderful, and changed our hundred and six water bill. To a sixty-nine dollar water bill, which we're very grateful and happy for. So I'm going to ask of you today, and I've already spoken with Marion about this. If she can go ahead and train me on using your water portal where I can look, or the customer portal. Where I can look at your water, what water we're using. And learn how to use that with my accessibility speech equipment for my computer. So I thank you in advance, Marion, and for any permissions, or anyone who has to give you approval for you to do this. And I want to say thank you in advance again. And also, you still need to improve your customer service for off hours. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Pamela.
Philip Anderson, you are our next public speaker, Philip, you have three minutes.
Thank you, good afternoon. I've lived part-time in Mission Lakes Country Club for over seventeen years. In this community, we have approximately eight hundred and fifty, nine hundred and fifty active septic tanks in this community. Depositing over three hundred thousand gallons of. Anaerobic sewage into the water table on a daily basis, and this has been going on for over fifty years. We voted two, three years ago to encourage Mission Springs Water District. To install sewer systems into the community. And we were assured that there were grants available to do so, and since that time, we have heard nothing and. Cannot tell if there's been any action taking on expanding the sewer hooks up into this community. All I ask is that we bring this to the. Burner top, doesn't have to be in front of the burner, but at least get it on the burners, so we can start including it as an agenda item. And move forward with the money acquisition, acquisition and development. Of the designs and to implement. The septic to sewer. Overhaul or switching, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir, and we are prohibited from having a back and forth discussion during public comments, but perhaps our General Manager later in the. Meeting during his. Director's comments or during his General Manager comments will will touch on one or two of the items that you discussed.
Mr. Wallam, your mic.
Okay, your microphone, yeah. Okay, we will contact Philip, and we have his number and and, you know, go over the whole process with him. Okay. All right, anyone else's story?
No further public speakers.
Okay, item six, COVID update.
All right. Excuse me, there, can you hear me? As I think all of us know, this virus has impacted us even more severely than. I don't know about, and I should be careful by saying impacted. It is a little more contagious, and we're we're knowing that because we have. Over ten people that have been, you know, affected by the the virus and. And I I think that's the way it has been with almost every place in the valley and in the state. What I heard this morning was that the encouraging thing is that on the East Coast. They're on the downside, it's starting to decline. In the Midwest, it's maintaining, and however, on the West Coast, we're still on the incline. But they expect that we will see the peak here by the end of the month, and then we will see a decline. With that said, however, we take our staff. And Board's safety very seriously, and Oriana has been working feverishly to keep up on the changing COVID regulations. And policies and procedures. And while the district staff has been impacted by the COVID Omicron variant. None of the cases or close contact situations were a result of the district's. Situation or activities. Staff has been instructed to take all necessary precautions, which is what we're doing. To be safe, including, we've even gone into COVID training, if you can believe that. As an example, by for those who are participating via Zoom, we have a remeasured all the board seating up here. And on the dais to ensure a six-foot separation and sanitized all the surfaces. And protective plastic panels, which you probably can't see on the screen, would separate each of the directors, so. We're we're very cautious. Which is evidenced by the fact that we that we haven't seen anything. That has been caused by the district activities, however, we have in, we have. Ramp up our cautiousness, and we are requiring masks at all times. We're going back to Zoom meetings most of the time. And we will continue with that until we start seeing it's safer to go back to normal operations. Other than that, it it is a little bit. Stressful to have that, to, you know, because every day that I come in essentially since Christmas. I hear of somebody has been impacted by it, you know, either. Has been in contact with somebody with the virus or. Or has had the virus, but and is required to to test before they can return, and we do have a couple of employees returning. So with that, are there any questions?
I just would like to make a comment, General Manager, if you if you all would like to. Take a look underneath the water drop in the logo behind me, I'm going to move the screen around so you the. Divider around, so you can see that he wasn't fibbing to you, we actually do have plastic. Plastic inserts in between each 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 board member.
We've had them right from the very beginning.
Yes, yes.
I have a question. Steve.
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, um, did you say we had ten out now, or ten overall?
We don't, we don't, I don't know how many for sure, I don't think, we have a total of ten out, we have about that many.
Actually, between contact and actually having the virus, I believe, we've gone back down to eight or seven or eight. Up to as many as thirteen for close contact, and then we would have to quarantine up to fourteen days. But where we are, or excuse me, ten days to fourteen days, depending on the situation, and we've now had people come back, I was one of the close contacts. For the last couple of weeks, but yeah, it's been impacting our operations significantly.
And several of those people that have been, or have gone into quarantine, not isolation, my wife tells me that there's a difference. They're basically working from home, so it hasn't really impacted, you know. Yeah, we just don't want them in the office getting other people sick, and if there's any threat of that, we tell them to go home and work from home if they can.
So they're all, they're all basically okay, though, they're.
Yes.
No really, really bad hospitalization cases or anything.
No, we don't have anybody in the hospital now, but. We might have, but, you know, I I'm not at liberty to say.
I I just wanted to add that I I listened to the Coachella Valley Water District Board Meeting, I think it was yesterday morning, and they have fifty. Fifty or fifty-two out right now, so. Which is ten percent of their workforce, and you're at about the same percentage, so just remember it's out there and stay safe as you can.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay, and as I understand it, we're having the Human Resources Report on Tuesday?
Yes. Connecting in with everybody so that they're here.
Moving on to the item number eight, twenty twenty-two calendar drawing contest. The presentations will be made on Tuesday. However, just want to reach out to Marion saying what a what a terrific calendar that is, we have some very talented. Kids in our community, and that's that's really awesome, so. On Tuesday.
Good calendar, I looked at it today, I picked mine up out of my box earlier this week. Glad to see study sessions, board meetings, everything laid out for the public on there. The only problem with it was the printer deleted January thirty-first. There is no January thirty-first, it just skipped the date.
Well, then we don't have to do anything January thirty-first. Okay.
You gotta go check it out.
That's a good catch, I didn't even notice that.
Wow, great catch, Director Duncan.
Speaking of calendars, though, today is Danny's birthday.
Oh, okay, well, happy birthday. All right.
Director Duncan, I think it's because of leap year.
You know, I thought about that, but there's, there is. Uh, what is it, Monday? The thirty-first, there Monday, last day of January, there is nothing there, and February doesn't start until Tuesday. So it's like Groundhog Day, we just get to sleep and take that day off.
It's a non-day. There you go, get a discount.
Yeah, okay. Anything else? Okay, moving on to the action items, do we have anybody? Any member of the public on item number nine wishing to speak?
Not that they've indicated prior to the meeting, but if there's anybody on the line that wishes to make. A comment on this item, will you please unmute your mic? You are clear. Nobody has indicated they would like to speak.
Okay. Item number nine, resolution twenty. Twenty-two dash zero one, resolution of the Board of Directors of the Mission Springs Water District proclaiming a local emergency persists. Re-ratifying the proclamation of the state of emergency by executive order. And as in Nora zero dash zero nine dash twenty-one. And re-authorizing remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the Mission Springs Water District. For the period December nineteenth, twenty twenty-one through January nineteenth.
This should be twenty-two.
I assume. And pursuant to the provisions of the Ralph M. Brown Act. Is recommended to approve the resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero one. Continuing teleconferencing meetings for the period of January nineteenth. Twenty twenty-two to February nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, that's the right one right there.
Yeah, okay.
So move.
Okay.
Was we, we're voting on that today?
Oh, I thought we were, okay.
That we. Vote on a Tuesday.
Okay, I thought that was to keep it alive for Tuesday, okay.
Yeah, no, it's.
Tuesday, I think, is the eighteenth, so.
Yeah. Anybody, any member of the Board wishing to comment on that item? Okay, moving on to item ten, appointments to board standing committees. Everybody take a look at your standing committees, where you are. As far as a standing committee goes, if anybody would like a change. From what there's present assignment is, shoot me an email, and I will make the adjustment. On Tuesday to the Board. Okay, any, any comments from the Board on that issue right now?
All you really have to do is flop you and me. Oh, and then me and Dan, I know you'd have to. Have to do a little bit more than that, but.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'll work on it. All right, item eleven, affiliation listing. Is recommended to review, update if necessary, and approve the current board affiliation listing. Again, preview the listing, and we will make the adjustments on Tuesday. Item twelve, federal advocacy services, Capri and Clay Incorporated. Is recommended to authorize the General Manager to execute an agreement for services. With Capri and Clay Government Relations in the amount of four thousand dollars per month for the term February first, twenty twenty-two. To January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. General Manager Wong.
Okay, thank you, Laura Morgan Kessler, who has been working with me longer than any. Lobbyist, I think. That I've been I'm familiar with, except for, we started out with things. It's good to see you, Laura. And she will have a presentation today, does Marion want to say anything? Did you want to say anything, Marion, first, is that, is anything you wanted to say?
Oh, well, thank you, good afternoon, members of the Board, I was just going to introduce Laura Morgan Kessler. As General Manager, while I mention our federal legislative outreach and advocacy efforts. And as I'm sure all of you are aware, one of the most notable projects. She has helped spearhead for the district in recent years is guaranteeing funding for our groundwater quality protection program, which has received significant. Dollars as a result of her efforts, and with that, I'd love to introduce Laura, thank you.
Hey, thanks so much, Marion and Arden, and good afternoon, Directors, it's really great to be with you all virtually today. So my name is Laura Morgan Kessler, and I'm a principal with Kirksey and Clay here in Washington DC. And I've had the privilege and honor of serving as the district's federal advocate here in DC. I really appreciate the opportunity to talk with you briefly today about all the latest and greatest happening back here in DC. So you may recall when I last spoke with you, I talked about the possibility of Congress reinstating earmarks. In their annual appropriations process for the first time since twenty-ten. An earmark is when a member of Congress has funding included in one of the twelve annual appropriations bills. For a specific project, prior to twenty-ten, the district was successful in receiving several earmarks from both the Army Corps of Engineers. And the Environmental Protection Agency for the groundwater quality protection project. So in March of last year, both the House and the Senate Appropriations Committee announced that they would be accepting. Community project requests, which is the new term for earmarks. From members of Congress, so I worked closely with staff at the district. To prepare and submit these request forms and all the required supporting documentation to your congressional delegation. As a result of these efforts, coupled with the district's continual engagement back here in DC. We were able to secure a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar community project request. For our groundwater quality protection project from Senator Dianne Feinstein. That is currently included in the Senate Energy and Water Appropriations Bill. So as you can imagine, this was incredibly exciting news for the district, Senator Feinstein received a very significant number of requests. For funding for Army Corps of Engineers projects, so knowing that ours rose to the top of her list. Really speaks highly not only of the merits of the project, but as well as the continual communication we have had with her and her staff about the project. So one important note about these community project requests is that since Congress has not yet completed its work. On the fiscal year twenty twenty-two appropriations bills, our request is not yet final. Currently, leadership in both the House and the Senate Appropriations Committees are meeting to discuss what the path forward is for all of these appropriations bills. And a part of that discussion is going to be whether or not these community projects will in fact remain in the final bill. Should that be the case, our project is in a very strong position to remain in the final funding package that would be signed by the President. Should Congress be unable to come to an agreement on the inclusion of these community project requests? The fact that our project was included in the Senate bill is still very much a win for the district. The inclusion of this project in the Senate bill sends a very strong signal to the Army Corps that continuing to work and move our project towards completion. Is a priority for Congress. Outside of COVID nineteen, the biggest issue here at the federal level over the past year has been the topic of infrastructure. After months of work and negotiation, Congress finally passed a bipartisan infrastructure bill. The by the now known as the bipartisan infrastructure law or bill. Is a one point two trillion dollar infrastructure investment, roads, bridges, transit, water, and broadband. Before I talk about, briefly talk about a couple of the opportunities in that bill that would be important to the district. I just wanted to provide a few contextual notes about the bill, because I know there's a lot of information circulating out there about this package. So the bipartisan infrastructure law is a five-year bill, so funding will be spread out from fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-six. There are no community projects included in the bill, all of the funding is specifically for federal programs, not specific projects. Each agency that received funding is tasked for moving it on their own speed, which means funding opportunities between EPA and the Corps and the Bureau will likely not align from a time-wise standpoint. What we're hearing is that opportunities included in these bills where they are plus-ing up current funding accounts, we will likely start to see those first. Competitive grant notices come out in the coming weeks. Whereas the bill created new programs where the agencies have to create them from scratch, that will take longer and can expect the first time we'll see those opportunities. Will be towards the end of calendar year twenty twenty-two. So particular interest to the district, bill included eight point three billion dollars in funding for the Bureau of Reclamation. Two hundred million dollars for the Army Corps of Engineers Environmental Infrastructure Project, which is the account that our project falls under. And over thirty billion dollars in funding from the Environmental Protection Agency. Since bill was signed into law in late November, various federal agencies that received this funding have begun to hold public stakeholder engagement meetings. About how they will implement this law and when these funding opportunities will be ruled out. I've been able to participate on all of these virtual events and have shared with district staff all of the relevant takeaways. To ensure that when these opportunities are made available, that the district is ready and well poised to apply. So we now find ourselves in a couple of weeks into calendar year twenty twenty-two, which here at the federal level means the official start of the second session of the hundred and seventeenth Congress. In the coming weeks, Congress will be focused on trying to finalize and pass all twelve, the fiscal year twenty-two appropriations bills. As the federal government is currently operating under a continuing resolution until February eighteenth. We also now have a date for the State of the Union on March first, and this is an important date because it means that the release of the President's annual budget proposal. Will likely come after that sometime in mid-March. Also, in February and March, members of Congress will begin the annual process of soliciting both programmatic and community requests. For fiscal year twenty twenty-three, so as you can get a sense, quite a bit of activity coming in the next weeks and months. Which will provide a lot of opportunities for the district to continue its engagement with your federal decision-makers. Back here, both on Capitol Hill as well as at the agencies. I want to make sure to leave time to answer all of your questions, so with that, I will once again say how much I really appreciate the opportunity. To be able to advocate and work on your behalf back in DC, and I look forward to any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, do we have any questions from the board?
I got one.
Yes, Vice President Ray.
Hi, Laurel, how are you doing?
I'm good.
What's the weather like there?
It's cold, we we got eight inches of snow last week, so that's for us, that's quite a bit.
All right, it's kind of chilly here, too, it's down the low seventies.
It was a little overcast, but that two hundred and fifty thousand for that Diane Feinstein has, what can we use that for, what is that?
Yeah, so that is money that will go, actually go to the Army Corps, since they're the ones doing the project, and essentially that's construction money, so that two hundred and fifty thousand. When it becomes included in the final bill, that will allow them to work on another aspect of constructing our project.
All right.
What what project is that exactly? Is it, is it specified to to a particular project, I missed that part, I was gonna.
Yeah, sure, so that is for our groundwater protection program, so converting the septic to sewer. And the great thing about how it's worded in the bill is the the name of the project is actually very broad, you all are listed as Desert Hot Springs. So that really provides the Corps with a lot of flexibility as far as which component of our congressionally authorized project they can use that funding for.
I did, I I was not aware that the Corps was involved in this. This project, is that for? The Brownstone area, or has that been specified yet?
So.
Well, Brownstone's a neighborhood that I'm thinking of, but I I I wasn't aware that, other than the. wastewater treatment plant that we've got on the books and the Mission Lakes project that the citizen just called in Mr. Anderson about. I'm trying to specify to narrow down exactly what what project that is. Groundwater. So we have 16 million, I think, coming in for the that can be used throughout the project. And I guess is that this the same situation here?
That's state money, Steve.
Right. And that's why I'm asking the question. I can't figure out what project that the Army Corps of Engineers suddenly is.
Our groundwater protection project.
Sure. So in.
For what? We don't. I haven't heard of a groundwater protection program that's specific that that involves the Corps.
Sure. So maybe I can I can help provide a little bit of context that might answer your question, Director. So in the early 90s, the district received a congressional authorization for a project, a joint project with the Army Corps of Engineers. And he purposefully titled it. I mean, it is titled the Groundwater Quality Protection Program. And it's a congressional authorization that allows the Army Corps to spend up to a certain amount of funding to work through transitioning the septic tanks to sewer. So it is a broad encompassing authorization for the whole aspect of the project. And then over the years, we have been working with the congressional delegation and with the Corps LA District Office to receive small chunks of federal funding to do very specific portions of that project. So this $250,000 is another piece of that puzzle. It is not specifically allocated by Congress which specific piece of our broad project that money could be used for. But I know staff at the district are in constant communication with the LA District Office about which pieces of the project are next and how we can move that forward. So once that bill gets signed into law with that funding in there, then the Corps District Office in LA will be reaching out to the district to start those conversations about what portion of the project to work on next. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Director Sewell? Director Duncan?
No, thank you.
Okay. And we will be voting on that on Tuesday.
I'm waiting on a question for Laurel, too. Just another one. Laurel, do you hear anything about the Aqua Conference? I don't think anyone this year.
I had that same question.
Yeah, no, that's a that's a great question. So, you know, in general, back here in DC, we are not in a great spot when it comes to COVID, particularly actually Capitol Hill itself. There's over the past week, there's been a lot of changes both on Capitol Hill and at the federal agencies related to COVID. A lot of federal agencies were scheduled to start their phase reopening this week and last week. They have all pushed those back to at least the end of January. Some of them have yet to set a date. Over on the Capitol Hill side, last week, the attending physician came out and sent a letter to all members of Congress, strongly encouraging that as much as possible, they allow their staff to work from home. Speaker Pelosi has extended the period of remote voting until mid-February. So the Aqua Conference, which is scheduled, I think, March 1st through 3rd, I have not heard anything definitive, but I was having some conversations with their DC staff. And it sounds to me like, given what the COVID cases have been like in DC and potentially some of the feedback that they received from Aqua members, that they they may be having internal conversations about making changes to the conference, whether they pivot it virtually or try and reschedule for later in the year. I don't know. But I do know that in the past day or two, they have started having conversations about how to how to possibly make some changes. Because I know one of the the, you know, great parts about the conference they put on is there's usually an afternoon where staff from the Hill or members of Congress come and speak to you all. You all usually meet somewhere on the Capitol complex. And given what's happening in COVID, I know those would just would not be possible in person right now. And same thing with any ability to meet with members of Congress, their staff or agency staff in person. They just aren't taking in-person meetings for the most part right now. So I I if I had to pull out my crystal ball, I would speculate that Aqua may be deciding to make some changes to their currently scheduled in-person DC conference at the beginning of March.
I would get I would guess your crystal ball was probably more accurate than not.
I'm certainly going to continue to keep, you know, Arden and Brian aware of any changes that happen here as soon as Aqua, you know, makes a formal decision, one way or the other, so that you guys can have that information in a timely manner.
Okay. Well, at least we got you there for us.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. General Manager Wong, do you have anything you want to add to?
Other than, you know, we it's the same contract price-wise as last as last year and before. So no increase. So thanks, Laura, and it has just been an honor, and I just can't compliment you enough for the good job you've been doing with for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item.
Go ahead.
Moving on to item 13, Desert Willow's Waterline Replacement Project Notice of Completion. It is recommended to accept the Desert Willow's Waterline Replacement Project as complete and authorize the release of the retention money held for the Van Dyke Corporation in the amount of $65,210, 35 days after filing notice of completion. Parenthesis NOC in parentheses. General Manager Wong.
I'll just I'm going to let Brian provide you with the details of this. Just like you said, this is for acceptance and release of retention. Project is complete. We, of course, participated with the community of Desert Willows. They that Brian will get into that. But the good thing about it is that this is one of those situations where we accepted a system that wasn't built to our standards. And if you ever want to know why we are so ruthless about our standards, this is one case where, you know, these these lines were breaking on us. Jeff and I were in out there before Brian even got here, and it's happened even while Brian's been here. Some of those lines did vertical breaks that just flooded the system, and then we had entire areas where we had to repave. So this is going to save us some money from the repairs we had. So it's a good project from that standpoint. Brian?
Sure. Thank you, General Manager. Good afternoon. Yes, the Desert Willows Waterline Replacement Project included the replacement of approximately 7,600 linear feet of eight-inch pipeline and apartments. And it's continuing to deliver potable water to the Desert Willow's gated community. This project was inspected with contract inspection was and was performed by the district. And we went on site again on December 21 of 2021, just to make sure some of the final punch list items were completed. They were. All progress payment invoices were authorized for payment to the contractor as recommended by our construction management consultant. The notice of completion will be recorded at the County of Riverside Recorder's Office following board acceptance. The final contract price of the project was $1,485,288.43, of which 321,000, almost 322,000 has been reimbursed to the district by the Desert Willow's Property Owners Association through a cooperative agreement related to pavement replacement. That concludes my report. I'm able to answer any questions at this time.
Hey, any questions from the board? Director Gracia?
No questions.
Director Duncan?
No, thank you.
Okay.
This project has been in front of you several times.
Yeah.
I know. I don't blame you. You've heard about it before. So, okay.
All right. Moving on to item 14, Award of Construction Contract for the Regional Water Reclamation Facility Monitoring Wells Project. It is recommended to authorize the General Manager to award the contract for the construction of the Regional Water Reclamation Facility Monitoring Wells Project to Yellow Jacket Drilling Services LLC, the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $184,350 plus a 10% contingency of $18,435. Total of $202,785, and to do all things necessary to complete the project. Director or excuse me, General Manager Wong?
Thank you. I this is a basically when we do these projects and and you'll see this in mainly the conditions of all waste discharge requirements is that we they they will say that they want us to monitor the groundwater around the plant to see if we affect it in any way. And that's what this project is going to accomplish. This is reimbursable. And and this this is a requirement of our permit. We just need to start the process. You'll get a few of these here and there from now on for a while in the expansion of our regional wastewater treatment plant. Does that you want to go ahead and?
Sure. Just something very quickly to add to that. It is a requirement of our waste discharge requirements given to us by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. Staff did receive and publicly opened two bids as outlined in the bid summary attachment. After review, staff qualified the bids and found that Yellow Jacket Drilling Services LLC was the lowest responsive bidder. As such, staff recommends the award of the contract to Yellow Jacket. The contract amount for construction is under the engineer's estimate and was as compiled on November 4, 2021. Again, in budget, good contractor, and it is part of the larger appropriation of the capital improvement budget of the 51 million that we've brought to you before. Entertain any questions at this time?
Hey, Vice President Wright, do you have any questions? Director Sewell, Director Duncan?
No, sir.
Director Gracia?
Well, just one, really. So this gives us the ability to establish a background numbers for what what we'll compare against into the future as to whether or not we're living up. Is that what that? Is that what this is?
A combination of the answer to your question is yes. We have another well that they have identified as looking at background. This will then be looked at to compare that to the background of the well. So it will be part of that process, yes, to make sure that we're meeting our permit limits.
These will be monitored almost throughout the life of the.
Correct, correct.
Project, yeah. Or not not just to the project, to.
As long, yeah, as long as we use those ponds, we will continue to monitor.
Use those ponds, yes.
Any other questions? Okay, item 15, Contract Amendment with AECOM for the technical support during construction of site work and well fitting for new drilling, excuse me, for new well number 42. It is recommended to authorize the General Manager to negotiate and execute a contract amendment with AECOM Technical Services for a an amount not to exceed exceed that of $31,132. A total of $105,798 for technical support services during the construction of well 42. Could you expand on that? It was a little bit confusing the way I wrote it there.
Yes. Well, I mean, and it's kind of good news, but bad news is it's going to take us a little more work. Do we have to redesign it? But I'm going to live. I'm not going to take Brian's under way from him because I always get blamed for doing that. Brian will explain it to you. You'll see what I mean by good news, bad news.
Okay. I guess, President Martin, this is an increase in AECOM's budget. What ended up happening is we were going through the construction process, and we were looking at the final yield of this well. It actually exceeded what we expected. Because it exceeded what we expected, we didn't want to lose the opportunity to get that additional yield. So we went through a change process and changing out the motor of the of the actual pump. When we changed out the motor, that required us to then look at the electrical requirements with with Edison. And then from that standpoint, we had to change the motor control unit. So it's been it's it's a good problem to have that we're going to have increased capacity at this well. Unfortunately, it's required us to do additional engineering to allow us to take advantage of that extra yield. So this contract allows us to continue to move forward with AECOM and do those types of activities through the remainder of construction.
Okay, all right.
Okay. You see now what I mean by good news and bad news?
Yeah. Vice President Wright? Okay. And Director Sewell, Director Duncan? No comment? Gracia, any comment?
Just one. Is this for the new one that's still working out the kinks on or is this something else?
This is a new well that is at the corner of Pearson and Little Morongo. It is well 42. There are two other wells very close to this in that corner, if you're familiar with that. So it is under construction. If you go to the site today, you'll see the black pipe coming in out of the ground with our monitoring or monitoring locations and other sounding equipment still there. They haven't put the final cap, the concrete around that area yet. But yes, it is under construction, and we are going through the process of ordering the pump. Matter of fact, I believe back in December, we just issued the the submittal, the pump's submittal. So yes, it's still under construction.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, moving on to item 16, Midyear Budget Report and Proposed Fiscal Fiscal Year 2021 slash 22 Capital Budget and Continuing Appropriations. It is recommended to approve the midyear budget report and proposed fiscal year 2021 slash 22 Capital Budget and Continuing Appropriations.
Pardon me? Okay. This is, yeah, I'm going to just introduce Mr. Seha Arturle. We'll give you the the presentation today again. We're pretty much on target. So that's the good news. Not many adjustments this year.
Okay.
Okay, Arturle?
Good afternoon. Can you see the screen of the report?
Yes.
Yes.
Distinguished members of the board and President Martin, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present the Mission Springs Water District midyear report as reviewed and approved by Director, excuse me, General Manager Wallam for your information and approval of a capital, a couple of the capital projects and capital assets. And I'm going to start with what we started with at the beginning of the year, as this is the six months in. The assumptions were considered during the preparation of the annual operating budget of 3% increase to revenues due to continued increase in consumption and accurate data collection. Grants are still expected to start coming in, and we have already collected several funds for grants related to the IRW MP, well 42, and the DAC project for the design of areas H and I. Three positions were approved by the board. That was the engineering manager, an engineering admin person, and the information and technology manager. As you remember, the census revealed that Desert Hot Springs is the fastest growing community in the Coachella Valley. And let's not forget that we're also through working through a pandemic, and we have maintained a high level of customer service and support throughout this whole time. We have maintained essential only expenses and activities, which will help you understand the December 31 Operational Income and Expense Report on the following page. And finally, the requests that are being made are related to the Riverside County Broadway work and capital assets, and I'll cover those in a few minutes. So the district continues to trend with an income of over $3 million, 3.7 to be accurate, which are 1% over budget, which is great considering that we are talking about a $12 million budget. Expenses are also trending to the positive, primarily due to tighter controls and expenditures. And finally, non-operating revenues have increased 21% over budget due primarily to property taxes that have increased with the increase in home values. So capital improvements, these are the ones requests, a few of the requests that are actually being made by management. And these capital improvements are usually long-term projects that increase the value or service to an organization. The main two that the district is requesting approval for are driven by partnering with outside agencies. That would be the county and the city. And the last three are for projects that are nearing completion and need additional funds to get them completed. Additionally, requests are being made for equipment and improvements to the district. Those are usually a few months or within one year and do not qualify as a capital program project. They are for the drywall repairs and painting of this building, for the annex enhancements to create office spaces for administration. And finally, we have been working on several system integrations that will allow staff to get information to and from the finance. staff to get information to and from the finance and billing system faster and be able to serve our customers timely and with accurate information. Uh, that's why we need that, uh, server integration. Uh, looking forward, this is some of the, uh, work that we're, um, doing now uh, in looking for grants and also some of the debt that we're going to have to incur for some of those projects that we have going on. Um, last year's, this is, uh, taking a snapshot at, uh, December, uh, 31, 2021, comparing it to 2020. And last year, that number for the debt service ratio was 12.05 versus 6.03 this year. Um, the requirements are 1.25 by our debt covenants. And as you know, the debt ratio is a calculation of what was brought in revenues over expenses, removing anything that is non-cash transactions, uh, such as depreciation and compares it against the debt payments that have to be made that one month or that one year. Uh, in this instance, it means that the revenue over expenses for December was 6.03 times the debt that has, that is due for that month. Uh, normally we see this number on an annual basis and remain somewhat the same. While, uh, when looking at it on a monthly basis, it does fluctuate. Uh, and once again, it went from 12.05 to 6.03 this year. And that is because the property taxes that are normally collected in December have not been deposited to the district's accounts as of today, which includes the sewer service payments collected through the, uh, with the county. And, uh, in summary, and some of the highlights of the, uh, the current budget and the mid-year budget is, uh, we are not requesting any changes to operating revenues and expenses. Uh, currently, um, as approved, uh, $19.9 million in revenues and 18.6 in expenses respectively. Uh, capital replacement, uh, reserve target is, uh, still under the policy that the board approved, uh, number 95 dash 20, uh, by 6.4 million dollars. The only requests that are, uh, are for capital improvements and capital assets of a total of 441,000. The district must demonstrate financial well-being to receive grants and loans. And from the numbers provided, we can see that that is the case. Um, and remember that the district continues to plan on going after grants and loans to continue with the many improvements and, uh, to keep up with the growth and services that the community relies on the district for. Uh, this has made, uh, possible by effective leadership and planning, uh, and maintain the district on track, uh, through these challenging times. And our priority remains the service to our customers and to protect and maintain our most valuable resource, which is water. Uh, and at this point, I will answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, um, Vice President Wright? Director, okay. Uh, Director Duncan?
No, thank you.
Director Grusha?
Um, do we, I don't know if I want to go into that. Maybe I'll, uh, maybe we, you should schedule a, uh, finance committee hearing so we could go over that again, on that part where the number dropped in half or doubled, but I'm not, didn't quite catch that sounded, uh, like it's something that I'd like more explanation on, the debt service ratio number.
Sure.
But I, you know, if it takes 20 minutes, I, I don't know if I want to do that here.
Yeah, I, I will provide, uh, General Manager Wallam more information that we can pass on to you to answer that question for sure.
Maybe, uh, President's also chairman of finance, maybe he can schedule a meeting and I, I think I'm a member too, so maybe we can figure it out together. And I can make another hundred bucks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your input. Any other questions or comments? Okay, moving on to, uh, discussion items. Item 17, Critical Services Center and Administrative Building Update.
Yes, thank you. Uh, thank you, President Martin. Uh, just a very quick update of the Administrative Building and Critical Services Center. Uh, we continue to work with the architect and the engineer to come up and develop the building layout. Uh, we have looked at the site itself. We have come up with a, an alignment of the uh, warehouse area. We've looked at the actual building and the layout following, uh, what we've received guidance from the board as far as trying to not necessarily copy, but stay very close to what you've seen at the East Valley, uh, Water District Building. We have done that. Right now, the architect is going through and putting some final touches on some exhibits. Once those exhibits are done, we expect those at the end of this month. We will then be reaching out to the board to have possibly a workshop in February with, as we agreed to, uh, as part of the process, so we can get your book, show you what the layouts look like, what we're proposing, get your buy-in, uh, answer any questions. And at that point, we'll start cutting them loose to start doing actual design, uh, and construction drawings at that point. So, uh, very excited about how the building is moving along, how quickly it is. I know they made some promises when they were here that it was going to be six months, six things of that nature, and they're staying to that schedule. So we're very excited and we're looking forward to, uh, reaching out to you and having that workshop in, in, uh, next month in, in February. Thank you.
Any questions from, from the board? Okay, uh, Director Duncan?
No comments.
Director Grusha?
Uh, no questions.
Okay, moving on to item 18, Mission Springs Water District Regional Water Reclamation Facility Update. I'm going to let, uh, Steve, uh, we don't have much. You've heard everything. Not much action has happened over the, the, the holiday season, but I'll let Steve bring you up to date on anything. Mr. Ledbetter?
Thank you, General Manager. Good afternoon, uh, President Martin and members of the board. Uh, we did kind of cross through a couple of milestones. Uh, we did get a contract executed with JF Shea. Um, we are having our pre-construction meeting next week with the contractor and all of the other representatives involved in the project. And we're expected to begin construction in March. Um, that means that we'll have our, all of our biological surveys to confirm there are no birds, desert tortoise, burrowing owls on site on the 30 days leading up to March. So those will all be done in February. Um, so it's good to see that schedule finally coming together. I won't touch too much on the monitoring wells construction, which was, uh, which will be awarded on Tuesday. That was already discussed. Um, but the district's also contracting with West Yost to prepare the TDS impact evaluation work plan. And that was part, uh, additional requirement of our WDR permit with the Regional Water Quality Control Board. Uh, and that TDS impact evaluation work plan does play into the three monitoring wells as this work plan's going to identify how we're going to continue to collect and monitor TDS and nitrate impacts in and around the proposed regional water reclamation facility. Uh, in addition, we're preparing, uh, we're getting ready to execute a contract with AECOM for the repackaging of the area M2 sewer project. Um, and that is, that design was completed back in 2009. And, uh, we've, we've gone through a proposal process with AECOM and we're getting ready, like I said, to execute a contract for them to bring that up to current design standards. Uh, in addition, um, the easement that we've been working very closely with the Coachella Valley Association of Governments on Little Morongo Road, uh, that required approvals by the US Fish and Wildlife and California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Uh, we've gotten a little bit closer to the finish line on that process. The US Fish and Wildlife has completed their review. And now it's with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife to review and confirm that, uh, they are okay with us giving us the easement since the area in question is already disturbed and will have no adverse environmental impacts. Um, and that's all I have, uh, for an update today. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Vice President?
Yeah, I got it. Um, I didn't understand. When you said something about some project was, and, did you say, and? A project that we were one of the, that, that, um, the reclamation facility was working on, and I, I'm missing this.
The area is M. M is
M.
M is in Mary, correct?
Thank you. Okay, okay. That, that makes, okay, now I know.
Um, so that
What area that is in case?
Yeah, that's, uh, that's on Dillon Road and Bubbling Wells, everything kind of northwest of, of Dillon Road and Bubbling Wells. Uh, so kind of from Avenue to Menzana West or east to Bubbling Wells. And then from Dillon Road up to the school, I, I'm failing to recall the name. I think it's Camino Campanero at the north end there. Um, and that little pocket area up to the northwest, uh, by, I think it's San Gregonio Avenue up there. Um, but that's the area that, well, again, that's going to increase the flows, the initial flows coming to the new regional wastewater treatment plant. Um, and abate about 460 septic tanks as part of that project.
Which area, which area, or what was Mission Lakes Country Club? What num, or letter is that?
Uh, that's Area A.
A, and when, when is that scheduled? Or how, where in line is it?
Um,
if you don't know, that's okay.
I do know. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how best to say it. It's, uh, it's towards the bottom of the priority list. Um, there's areas, uh, M2, uh, the remaining portions of J and D, areas H and I, uh, and I believe K are in a, a higher priority on the priority ranking than Area A. Uh, but it is on the list and we're continuing to plug away at those, you know, a, as we get grant funding for them.
Okay, thank you.
For clarification, Steve, the priority of those were based on when the assessment districts were passed, as I recall. And, and Mission Lakes was the last assessment district to actually pass. So that's why it's not in this, it, the priority was based on the assessment districts being created. Mission Lakes was the last one to be created as our caller talked about a couple of years ago. So we are working through the engineering process of that right now and working with the core to get that engineering started.
Right, and the community wasn't, at that time, was not interested in
Correct, correct.
They voted no, actually, the first time.
Right.
Yeah, and, um, I'll also add that there's a 10-point criteria on that looked at various different things about, uh, connectivity, total project cost, uh, in, environmental impacts from each area that also played into the prioritization.
Right, yes.
You know, this, this has come up three times and, uh, including the gentleman that called in, Mr. Anderson today. Uh, perhaps you could schedule a community forum, a Zoom forum or something so that we can, uh, you know, flesh all this out for the community up there and so they can fully understand what's going on and, and what they can expect and when they might expect it. I know that, uh, these things can change based on certain things that we probably don't want to admit that they hang on and that can be the economy and changing and fluctuating prices and so forth. So, uh, you know, maybe we can figure out a way to, uh, inform the community so that their answer, or their questions get answered a little bit, uh, sometime here in the next, uh, few months. I think it's important enough. And there, that, that's a community that's completely engaged with the water district and have been for a long, long time. We should, uh, make a special effort to, uh, satisfy their interest.
Okay, any other questions? Eddie?
No.
Randy, any, any additional questions?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay, and, uh, Mr. Grusha, anything further?
Uh, not on this. Um, I thank you for the report. Very helpful. And I guess that means you won't be here on Monday or Tuesday in case something comes up between now and then.
Um, I'm, I'm happy to attend if, uh, if you guys would like me to be there on Tuesday. Uh, if any questions come up, I do always block out that portion on my schedule, uh, if you guys need me.
I, I just didn't know if it was standard, going to become standard that you weren't here during your regular meeting. And if it were, then I'd make a, a more concerted effort to get my thoughts together, uh, for the work sessions.
Director Grusha, I have been attending both the study session and board meetings the last several months and I'll, I'll, I'll continue to do so unless otherwise directed by staff.
Great, thanks. Thanks for letting me know.
General Manager Wallam, do you have anything you'd like to add? Um, no, but you know, we, we the, the process of when and where we do these, um, projects really depends on, um, when we can get the grant funding. And the project A is a very large project. And it's going to require a substantial grant, so we need to really put together an impressive program when we're talking to the state or federal agencies about getting the matching grant. These don't come together unless we have a grant.
Okay.
I do have a, might be a thought for, um, to, uh, get, to get ahold of their, the board up there maybe and
We, we've had, yes, we've done that periodically.
Okay, good.
We've had meetings up there.
Yeah, we have.
We will continue to do so. I couldn't agree more. It's time for us to get engaged.
Um, President Martin, I'd like to add one more thing. I would like to note that we're currently working with US Army Corps for the design to get, uh, grant funding for the design of Area A and Area G. Uh, those are the last two areas that we do not currently have a completed design and environmental package for. Um, so I am happy to report we've been working with the Army Corps. Things have been slow admittedly with, with COVID and getting that processed. But, uh, Assistant General Manager Macy, uh, has been taking the charge and making sure that sees its way to the finish line with the LA office at Army Corps. Um, so we are making some progress, but as far as construction goes, um, we, it's going to be a little bit before we get, get the funding together to get to that project.
To, to date, that, that's how these things proceed is that we, we, we do it a step at a time and we are, uh, uh, yeah. Steve is correct. We, we're getting ready to put, pull forward on the, on the engineering design, which will put us in a shovel-ready position.
Okay, okay.
And we also have to be very careful with our capacity because we are, you will see in this month's report, we, we are very close to capacity at the wastewater treatment plant.
I'm, I'm glad you added that because that is a concern that we get more projects approved before our additional plant is
But we're, yeah, by getting the regional plant going, we're in, we're in line now. We can start moving forward with these projects because we won't have them complete until we do have, until the capacity is there.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Uh, moving on to the consent agenda, take a look at the minutes. Uh, if anybody'd like to make a change now or, or an addition or, uh, review it over the weekend and we can address that on Tuesday. Uh, oh, same thing with the register of demands. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda from any of the board members? No? Okay. Anybody want to do their director's reports today?
I have none.
Okay. I'll give mine on Tuesday and, uh, Director Duncan?
I have none for December.
Okay, and Director Grusha?
Um, I don't think I'm going to have one this month.
Okay, all right. All right. General Manager's report. All right, um, only one thing to add. You can, you, we gave you a fairly comprehensive report. Um, we, um, we did go into a little more detail on the, uh, on the break over Christmas. Um, we're, we're on top of it and we've contacted JPIA. Uh, Marion might get into that a bit in, in her presentation today. And, um, and things are going about as well as can be expected. Uh, unfortunately, like I said, there were several houses that were below uh, grade or below the street grade. And those are the ones that were impacted by this flow. That flow should have gone out, right on out of Desert Hot Springs without any impact. But unfortunately, where the leak occurred, um, you know, we, it didn't happen. We also are initiating some programs to look at our system, prioritize, see where we do have more of these tamarisk trees or salt cedars so that we can be a, uh, very proactive in getting out in front of this to see where there's a potential for that to happen again. For some reason, we, we haven't had anything like this happen in, is, is from what I can remember much. But, and you know, we, we do have lines that are affected by roots, but we've had several of them recently. So I'm, I'm going to instigate and, and implement a program where we're looking at this and survey the lines and see what we can do.
Okay.
Uh, I also wanted to report that we did pass the San Gregonio Pass Groundwater Sustainability Plan, and I did that at a virtual meeting the other day and, uh, went well. And it was so nice to work with that group up there. Um, although the challenges are yet ahead of us. So that's all I really have. Um, and, uh, are we going to go with Marion's report first and then Arturo or? Is that, is that okay, Marion?
Sure, I, I'm going to leave my video off and see if the audio quality's a little better.
Okay.
Is my, am I okay?
Yeah, we can hear you great.
Great, thank you. Well, um, even with the holidays, uh, and COVID slowing us down, the past month has been very busy for the Public Affairs Department. I have a short PowerPoint that I am going to share with you all that, um, hopefully depicts some of this. In the early, and in the early morning hours of December 26th, MSWD crews made emergency repairs to a 12-inch water main connected to the booster station at our terrace reservoir site near Crescent Drive and Fifth Street. A tamarisk tree root had grown into the A tamarisk tree root had grown into the public utility easement and around the pipe. With rain saturating the soil and the wind picking up, it caused the root to put pressure against the pipe until it cracked. The pictures on the left, you can see that pipe. Thankfully, our operation staff responded quickly and efficiently and the distribution system and our water supply were not compromised. Cal Fire and representatives from the city of Desert Hot Springs assisted impacted residents. And later that morning, the Public Affairs team was called in to coordinate with the city manager's office, media and impacted residents. Currently, we have eight families, one of which was added to our list just yesterday, that have been or will be forced from their residences due to water damages. Five of the families were impacted the night of the incident and three more families are in the process of moving out so that necessary repairs can be made to their homes. Our JPIA liability carrier has retained the services of National Housing Insurance to assist these families in finding short-term housing, which is at a premium right now. We have prioritized communicating with the public and taking care of the affected families. In addition, we are continuing to provide resources and solutions as new situations arise. For those being forced to stay in hotels, we have arranged meal money advancements, access to food directly, if access to food accounts directly at their hotels if meal service is offered. And we've even brought in a Visa gift card to one family to tie them over until their meal money advancement could be deposited. We have also set up a claims process for all of those that have been impacted and have created a special webpage with claim forms and contact information. In addition, we have reached out directly to anyone identified as having damage that night and our claims manager has canvassed the area, visiting homes and residents in the area. He has continued to meet with each resident and owner and continued to communicate with them as we get a better idea of the damages and costs. I would like to extend a personal thank you to the city of, city staff for all of their help the morning of the incident. And I'd also like to thank our local hoteliers, including Miracle Springs Hotel and Spa, the Desert Hot Springs Spa Hotel and Aqua Soleil for the help in finding space for the residents during what was a very busy holiday break. I would also like to thank Team Mom Charities, who you may recall we partnered with for the citywide toy drive last month. I contacted Team Mom after the incident and we were able to arrange toys to be delivered to the hotels where the families were staying that had small children. As I mentioned earlier, the cause of the incident was tamarisk roots, which grow, grew and around our lines. A non-native species originally from southeastern Europe and Asia, tamarisks were planted in the Coachella Valley as a windbreaker. Unfortunately, these plants have spread to other critical areas and outcompete native plants while using tremendous amounts of water. MSWD has had three tamarisk or other root-related incidents in the past couple, past few weeks. And in many cases, these trees have been planted on private property and can potentially impact water lines located in the public easement. As GM, our GM just mentioned, we are currently identifying and prioritizing the possible root of the tamarisk trees and the, and other invasive foliage that may threaten our local water supply. I also wanted to just give you a quick update. Due to the recent increase in some of the COVID cases around the valley, many of the public events and gatherings are being shifted to a virtual format or, and they are being, or they're being postponed to later in the year. One that was included in your packet was the Palm Springs Air Museum fundraising dinner, which has been pushed back to Friday, March 25th. And we will provide you with additional details as it comes available. Our community, but I did want to take this opportunity to remind you about our community blood drive with Livestream Blood Bank. It is moving forward and will take place on Thursday, February 10th between 7:30 a.m. and 1:30 p.m. Livestream will be setting up their blood, their mobile blood bank on Second Street near the front of the admin building. They'll be doing lots of COVID, taking under consideration COVID precautions. Everyone will be required to wear face covering and social distance will be required at all times. Walk-ins are welcome, but appointments are highly recommended. And everyone who participates will receive a special Counting on You and 22 Long Sleep T-shirt. We are promoting this within the community. We'll be distributing flyers. And starting next week, you'll see some social media posts on this. And thank you, Director Duncan. I want you to know that our design team is already working, getting out their Sharpies and ready to add in the 31st on January and they're coming up with some creative solutions to fix that. But they are out there, some of them are already in the community and that, you can see those are the locations that have offered to hand them out for us. On Tuesday, I've asked our three winners to join us on Zoom so that I can introduce each one of them and they can show you their artwork personally. So far, we've received a lot of positive feedback and from the 12 finalists and community members who have looked at the calendar. With recent rains and improved water supplies across the state, California still remains, though, in a drought. December storms brought more than 200% of normal precipitation, improving drought conditions and filling many northern California reservoirs and improving hydroelectric capacity. However, the state will need additional storms in January and February to fully exit the drought. As you may recall, last month I mentioned to you that the State Water Resource Control Board was considering adopting a set of mandatory outdoor water restrictions, which were adopted on January 4th. These include not using portable water, potable water to clean driveways and other hard surfaces, not washing your car without an automatic shaft valve on your hose and avoiding excess runoff irrigation systems into the street and sidewalks. Most of, as I mentioned last month, most of the restrictions the state adopted are already practices in effect here in our service territory and are covered in our Stage 1 of our Water Shortage Contingency Plan. We will be weaving additional messaging in to our customer communications and reminding our customers of these restrictions as we move forward. Our billboard on Palm Drive will be getting a new look and a new home. We will be moving one spot forward near the intersection of Palm Drive, Palm Drive and Dillon. The new artwork bridges together our groundwater protection efforts and our value message. And the new vinyl will be delivered to Lamar on January 21st and be posted the week of the 24th. And last but certainly not least, our next two videos are ready for your review. They're going to cover topics of groundwater protection and our highly-trained MSWD staff. Since I am working from home and my bandwidth has been a little bit shaky here, I've asked Dory if she could actually play these videos. So I'm going to stop sharing my screen and ask that Dory help me out.
Do you see the video okay?
It looks like part of the screen is going to be cut off by the, by the images of the board on the right-hand side of the screen.
Okay, so you're not seeing it in full screen?
No.
No.
Dory, I'm seeing your browser window. I'm not seeing the video at window. Maybe just choose a different window.
Oh goodness. My apologies, give me just a moment.
I see it now, Dory.
Excellent, here we go.
People around the world know about the great tasting water from Mission Springs Water District. Part of the reason we keep winning international awards for the water we serve is due to our efforts to protect and preserve the source, our groundwater. One of the best ways to protect groundwater quality is by improving the quality of the water that goes into it. That is why MSWD built and operates an extensive wastewater treatment system. We enjoy many benefits of wastewater treatment, which promotes health and safety by reducing the spread of disease and protects the quality of our groundwater. Once treated, the water flows into percolation ponds, where it soaks into the ground and adds to our water supply.
Wastewater used to be a liability to water districts and now it's an asset.
The technology involved right now in treating wastewater makes it a viable source of water for the valley.
As we look toward the future, moving homes and businesses currently using septic tanks over to our wastewater treatment system is a priority. Unfortunately, septic systems can degrade over time, allowing untreated wastewater to seep into the groundwater basin.
Once your groundwater is contaminated, it takes at least 10 times more dollars to clean it up than it does to actually prevent pollution to begin with.
While our Allen L. Horton wastewater treatment plant can process 2 million gallons of wastewater each day, it is nearing capacity. To ensure we can convert existing structures from septic systems and serve new homes and businesses in our growing region, MSWD is building a new regional water reclamation facility.
We need it now more than ever, but the time is right for doing it as well.
The new state-of-the-art facility will add the capacity to treat an additional 1.5 million gallons of wastewater each day, allowing us to expand our groundwater protection program while meeting the needs of current and future customers.
There'll be plenty of room for the rest of the life of the wastewater treatment plant and expansions.
To minimize the financial impact on our customers, most of the project will be funded through grants and low-interest loans.
And the goal, of course, is to make sure we have a plant built that will meet our needs without putting the burden on our ratepayers.
By effectively treating wastewater, we can better serve our customers and provide, protect and preserve our most valuable resource, water. To learn more about wastewater treatment and the new regional water reclamation facility, visit mswd.org.
You'll have to, you just have to see my public relations person to do that.
Delivering water and treating wastewater is no small task. Our water and wastewater systems include more than 1.25 million feet of pipelines, 13 water wells, 24 reservoirs and a water reclamation facility. Keeping that system running smoothly requires our most valuable asset, our dedicated team of water professionals.
I would just say that our staff is highly qualified and we really put an emphasis on them being at the top of their game.
We have one simple mission, provide, protect and preserve our most valuable resource, water. Meeting that mission is the motivating force behind every employee.
We have the best in the valley, in my opinion, in our admin staff, the field workers, our management, everybody from our general manager to the newest hire.
It starts by hiring the right people. All our water and wastewater treatment facility operators are highly trained and possess state certifications, while our administrative and support staff excel in their field. Most importantly, all MSWD employees live by our seven core values of professionalism, accountability, respect, integrity, servant attitude, excellence and stewardship. Together, they create a better experience for everyone.
Customer service is our number one goal. If we don't take care of our customers, then we're failing.
It's one of our core values is a servant attitude and just being there to support our customers at any given time of the day.
If there's an emergency, someone is available 24 hours a day, 7 days a week.
And when our staff isn't hard at work, they can be seen around town, participating in service organizations, special events and giving back to the community.
I think it's important that there's a friendly face when you're having an issue with your water.
For the water professionals at MSWD, it is more than just a job. Our work is an opportunity to serve family, friends and neighbors in the place we call home. Visit mswd.org to learn more about Mission Springs Water District and our water professionals.
And that concludes my report. Thank you very much for all your time today.
Thank you, thank you. That was excellent. Excellent. And next, then you're going to hear about the money from Mr. Arturo.
Thank you, General Manager Wollum. For all intents and purposes, this report was covered in the mid-year budget and I can answer any questions. The highlights again were the district is trending upward with the net income of $3.7 million with revenues of $11.9 million in operating revenue and expenses of $9.4 million. And that's due to the falling back on some of the expenditures due to the pandemic and making sure that we look at our expenses in detail. And also the non-operating revenue, which is that 1.7 million in property taxes that have gone up over budget by 21%, due primarily to the increase in property taxes through the home values. And I can answer any questions at this time.
Okay. Vice President Wright, do you have any questions? Director Sewell, do you have any questions? Director Duncan, do you have any questions on that?
Oh, thank you.
Director Grouse, do you have any questions?
Not at this time, but I would like someone at some point very soon to go over the issue again that I raised during the budget review.
Okay. And board members, be sure and review the documents contained in the agenda in case there's anything that you discover that you'd like to address again on Tuesday. So moving on to district council comments.
Just briefly, we will have a closed session today and it will be on item number 27, Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91. That's one case, case number PSC 1600676, Mission Springs Water District versus Desert Water Agency. And that'll be the only item for closed session today. And then also, I'm sure you're aware, I just wanted to pass on that we did receive a ruling from the United States Supreme Court on the vaccine mandate that was being imposed on employers of over 100 employees. And the Supreme Court of the United States ruled that it was unenforceable. And so they struck that down, so I don't know if any of you are following that case, but we got a ruling from it today, so.
Okay. Director's comments. Vice President Wright, do you have any comments you'd like to make at this time? Director Sewell. Director Duncan, do you have any comments you'd like to make at this time?
No, thank you.
Director Grouse, do you have any comments you'd like to make at this time?
Just maybe just one and direct this to staff. I know you guys have been under some trying times lately and I guess after hearing the COVID report that it sounds as though it's even more trying than I was aware. And I know that I've been talking to people in the community that have been affected by the pipe break and I must say that the feedback has been completely 100% in good stead, I should say, I guess, for the district and especially for Marion Champion for the work that she's been doing over there. I guess that includes the people that have come in to help from the JPIA. But in only one case that started out as a complaint, I understand that it's turned into adulation for the district and I'm grateful to hear that. This is a very tough situation over there for a lot of people. And I just can't imagine all of this effort that had to go into kind of bailing us out, I suppose, and it sounds like it's being done. And staff deserves a great round of applause from the board for the work they're doing over there so far. So thank you very much.
And my only comment is to echo what Director Grouse just said. Good work on staff and not only during the event, but certainly the aftermath and dealing with the public out there. I think we made a lot of friends and it's extremely sad that it happened on so close to Christmas. And I mean, it's sad anytime, but that's a special, special circumstance. Anyway, good work and with that, we'll take a five-minute recess and we'll go into closed session.
I'm here, Dory.
Counselor, do you want to?
Yes, the board met in closed session. Item number 27, Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91. One case, case number PSC 1600676, Mission Springs Water District versus Desert Water Agency and there was no reportable action taken.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, and meeting is adjourned.